The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of July 25th. We'll call the meeting to order. And this evening, under presentations, we're pleased to have with us our Minister Carr, our MLA Minister Carr. Thank you so much for coming, agreeing to come this evening. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Would you like to say a few words before? I'm sure there will be some questions or...
I'm sure there will be. I guess I just want to say it's a pleasure to be here this year. Excited that things are kind of getting back to normal to a certain extent, and people are out and about, and just glad to see that the city really is bustling. It's nice to have that atmosphere. And I guess with the street dance on Saturday night and the different events that have been happening throughout the summer, organizations are getting ramped up again, and it's really nice to see all those volunteers out there doing what they do best.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And before we get into the questions, we'd like to thank you for all of your help on several occasions. We've got together, we've had issues, you've helped us solve them, and when we needed provincial funding, so much appreciated for your efforts in that regard.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll open the floor for any questions or comments from members of council. Okay, Counselor Clark, and then we'll go to Counselor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. I might as well get the elephant in the room out, give us an update on the nursing home, where you see it going, or how it's going to proceed. I guess that would be something that you knew was coming.
Sure. No, absolutely. No, I'm glad to talk about the nursing home. I mean, I know that it's been a long time since people have been raising money and since we've had our funds in place as a community. And we were fortunate enough last March, which is approximately a year and a half ago, to actually have the project approved. So prior to that, there was no announcement, there was no approval of a project. So really, the clock starts ticking on March of last year, so it's about a year and a half. Although, for the community, it feels like so much longer because we got our ducks in a row, we raised our money, we were very successful early on, so it just makes it feel so much longer. So right now, they're just doing the needs assessment as to exactly what we need within that facility, you know, what services are going to be provided, how many beds exactly. All of that work is being done, and hopefully that'll be done in the next couple of months, and then we move on forward with the planning and RFP process. So it's going to take a little while yet, but it's definitely moving forward, and you will see a new nursing home here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Minister Carr, for coming. In May, our council wrote a letter to the both provincial and federal government requesting some sort of assistance for municipalities for emergency services such as police, fire, I mean, even our healthcare system with the ambulance, things. The vehicles that just can't stop. There's no way you can get on your bicycle and do those kinds of services. We still need to have our roads cleared, our roads graded, and the RMs, different things like that. And so, we didn't get a response back that I'm aware of.
We did get a response.
Not a positive one.
Not a positive one.
That's right. Yes.
From the Minister...
Minister Harpower sent a response.
Yeah, Minister Harpower.
Yeah, but it was kind, I think I read that letter, but it wasn't a response that really meant we're going to look into something and do anything. And I was just wondering if there is anything that would come down the pipe. And I know in Alberta right now, gas is a lot cheaper than it is in Saskatchewan, and it's because the provincial government assisted that, and it's for everybody. So our letter was more directed just towards emergency services, but then I think it actually should be everybody, because right now, it's, I mean, it's the traveling, it's the going to work, it's also getting goods and services to our community. It's the person who's buying all of the goods and services that has to pay everything, whether if they come to pick it up or getting it delivered to the grocery store. And so, it makes sense to me that the federal government would come to the table and try and assist something like that, but I know they would like us to all stop driving. It just isn't practical in communities like ours, especially in the rural areas. And that's why I thought, is there anything that the provincial government, in the foreseeable future, can start thinking about helping with the price of gas for us? Well, I mean, I know that the letter was sent back by Minister Harpower, saying that we are continuing to monitor the situation. You're right, it wasn't all that positive, of course. With the government, you mentioned, like, ambulances, so whether it's our SHA, or our school divisions, or whatever the case might be, we just gave another $20 million to school divisions to help specifically with that kind of stuff. Our budgets for the SHA, if something happens that fuel costs, and there's no question, they're going to be more than we budgeted for, we will have to backfill that as a government. And so, just like you guys have your vehicles that you're going to end up having to backfill for, we have several different ministries that have those types of expenses that we will end up having to backfill for. And I mean, at the end of the day, they're all tax dollars that's paying for all of that. So I guess all of that is taken into consideration. But as far as affordability and what is costing the individual, I know that we, and I mean this when I say it, we are seriously looking at what ways we can help with individuals in that way. The Alberta government took off the fuel tax, which I believe is about 15 cents a liter, if I'm correct. I could be corrected on that. But at some point, they're going to put it back on again. And so, we want to find something that isn't, you know, it'll make some people happy in the meantime, and then when you go, when you turn it back, because as with municipal government, you need to have that base tax to help pay for the services, and if you start taking those taxes away, at some point in time, you have to backfill them again. So it's a lot of consideration, what that's going to look like. I don't know for sure, but yeah.
Yeah, well, that's good, though. It just makes me feel a little better to know that you guys are actually actively looking at that, because we did. I mean, we got the call from the federal government with our letter, basically saying it just, you know, was done, and there's nothing they can do. And then when we got the letter from the provincial government, that was the same kind of feeling I got, was that it doesn't, it's just kind of like, just keep paying it, and everybody will just kind of forget. But there's so many families struggling right now, and it all starts with our bills and the groceries and everything else, and the transportation. And so, if there's even a small way that the government can help, that the individual family, we ask municipalities, emergency services, but it's the individual person that needs to see the provincial government doing something that just helps them out with the bottom line, so, thank you.
And I guess I would just note on that, at the beginning, when fuel prices started to skyrocket, we did give that rebate back from SGI to people that had vehicles that were licensed, so the people that were actually using the gas at that point in time. And we thought that was a good way of getting it back into the hands of someone that's actually using that fuel, and so that was the start.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Surratt.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks for coming tonight, Minister. So kind of on the same topic, you know, to help with inflation and the price of energy and stuff like that, could it be as simple as increasing the municipal revenue sharing? Do you see that going up at all in the future here?
So municipal revenue sharing actually comes from a percentage of the PST that we bring in. You get 1% of that, and it goes back to that whole base funding. We budget based on the PST that's coming in. When PST goes up within the province, because it's a percentage of PST, municipalities actually get more money. So when times are good, you get more, and when times are bad, you'll get less. So I think we've had one year since we started municipal revenue sharing in 2009.
Something like that.
That it has actually gone down. We may have one more here, lagging from COVID-19, but that would be, the revenues are down for the province also. So I foresee the formula, we actually just renegotiated that with SUMA and SARM a couple of years ago, and I think it's like a five-year agreement before we look at it and open it up again. And but, as long as the PST is coming in well, and it is, you will see a bump in your revenue for the city.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Surratt. Go ahead, Counselor Port.
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks so much for coming tonight. Saskatchewan, like the rest of the country, is feeling the brunt of labor shortages, sorry. With the war in the Ukraine, we have a lot of people coming over to Canada who are ready to be a part of their communities, and that's including work in their communities. Is the Saskatchewan government giving any sort of incentive or kind of push to make the Ukrainian people that are coming over to come to Saskatchewan and to start working? Is there any sort of program being offered, so they're going to say, hey, we're going to choose Saskatchewan over Alberta and B.C. and kind of get there and ready to work?
Yeah, so we actually had the opportunity to have the first flight land about three weeks ago in Regina from the Ukraine, and that is something that the Saskatchewan government organized with a private company to bring that flight over here, because all of the flights that have come over from the federal government are not landing in Saskatchewan, they're landing in other provinces. So we kind of took that initiative to decide to have those people come here, and then we have a group called the Saskatchewan Ukrainian Council, which works with communities and employers that want those individuals that have work for them, and get them into their communities. So, once they landed, last week, they actually had like a one-stop shop where they could get their health cards and find out what jobs were available, and all of that kind of stuff. So we're really trying to make it as easy as we can for these individuals once they get here. Obviously, hopefully, they stay, but we do realize that some of them are just here for the short term, or depending how long the war lasts, they will go back. But there will be some that end up staying, and we're working really hard, to your point, to get them to hopefully come to our communities. I know that we've had individual families, even within the Estevan area, that have sponsored individuals and brought them here, put them up in housing, and have found them work. So great on those individuals for doing that. I think just talking about that and immigration, I know that you're aware that we're having some of these traveling meetings to talk about what Saskatchewan looks like within the Confederation. Call it autonomy, call it what you want. But immigration is a prime example of one of those things that if Saskatchewan could have control of immigration, like Quebec is allowed to have control, we could go out and we could more aggressively bring individuals in. This is a one-time opportunity because of the war, but normally, we're very restricted on the individuals that we can actually bring to the province. So having something like that open up for us, especially with the shortage of workers that we have, would be fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Port. Counselor Freck?
Thanks, Your Worship, and thanks, Minister, for coming. We recently had the opportunity to meet with the provincial government's employee in the UK, Vanessa Small, and I really want to thank you. She was a fantastic contact for us to have, and she's doing great work for the province over there, as well as for Estevan, so we're hoping that we can continue to have great relationship with her, as well as, I just wanted to, just on the economic development front, I know the province is working on a number of projects all over the place, obviously, on bringing more development to Saskatchewan, and I'm just hoping that we can continue to have good relationships to try to bring as many of those opportunities to Estevan, which I know you're working on very hard, but just that message to go back to the province. We see lots of good announcements in Regina and Saskatoon, and I know they're the big cities, but we really want to see some of those come here, and anything we can do on a provincial level to make Estevan more attractive, we would love to be involved in that conversation.
Absolutely. Every opportunity that I get when I'm talking with trade, export, and development, and I think you can attest to this through their employees, I am always hammering the fact that Estevan has lots of resources. We have the electrical grid, we have water, we have everything we need to set up business here. And so, you touched on the Trade Office over in the UK. We have several Trade Offices over there now throughout the world, and they're paying dividends because they are specifically going there and promoting the province of Saskatchewan. And each and every one of those officers that are working in those individual communities knows about Estevan and knows about what we have to offer. We put a really good package together a couple of years ago about everything that we have here and how business can set up, and every opportunity we get, we're selling Estevan. We do have a bit of a disadvantage when it comes to a Saskatoon or a Regina, and with some of the infrastructure that they have there, you know, some of these canola crush plants, they want it to be rated the global transportation hub. Can't blame them for that, but if somehow we can get one of those down here, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Frank. Go ahead, Counselor Wolieser.
Thank you, Your Worship. Welcome, Minister Carr. We've talked a lot about the labor shortage, and we have heard in the media quite a bit about some of the plans to bring additional healthcare workers to Saskatchewan. Other services that I think have maybe fallen to the wayside include the social services portfolio. We're really finding in this area of the province that those who are uniquely positioned to help vulnerable people most in need, those positions are vacant, and we're really struggling without them here. If you can just take back to the province that we're also looking for support in healthcare and social services. Thank you.
Actually, that's a really great point, because we're really focused on healthcare and some of the trades, and often, we don't think about social services as something, but I will take that information back.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wolieser. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to touch on healthcare as well, is the fact that a lot of people in Estevan feel that it's an Estevan problem, that we are short of physicians, and it's not an Estevan problem, it's a Saskatchewan problem, but it's also a Canada problem, and it's, I'm feeling, just from what I'm hearing, it's even bigger than Canada. There is such a big healthcare burnout right now that did stem from COVID, even though some people would like to believe that didn't happen. It is happening, it's still happening, but does our provincial government have any sunshine story to say that, like, you know, we found some way that we're going to bring more people to Saskatchewan? Because that's what I think would make people also feel better, is to know that they have security of their healthcare, because right now, I know people are driving from Estevan to Oxbow just to go and see a doctor because they can't get a family doctor in Estevan. And I know they've been bringing in the doctors, but they do leave after two years, which again is a Canada-wide problem. So, and I know you're actively working on it, and we do appreciate that, but I just thought if you could update us on anything that is really a feel-good story about that.
Yeah, so in the budget this year, we actually announced that we are going to be setting up, specifically taking kind of the responsibility away from the SHA and setting up a standalone agency specifically for recruitment. And right now, it's recruitment specifically of healthcare professionals, but it doesn't just stop at doctors. It's the nurse practitioners, it's the RNs, the LPNs, the care aides, whatever the case might be. So having that agency specifically for that, and then being able to have that lens and look at where across the province is in most need. Right now, it's in rural Saskatchewan, there is absolutely no question about it. And so, I don't know what that's going to turn into, I don't know, we're just starting that, how successful we'll be with that. I know a few years ago, there was a committee here that was formed, and they ended up having to do big incentives to get people to come to the community and give guarantees of time back and all of that kind of stuff. And I really don't want to see ourselves in that situation again, where, you know, you're fighting with your neighbor for the doctor, right? I know that, I actually did have the opportunity to speak with a couple of doctors up at the hospital, and I asked some of those kind of probing questions, and to your point, they don't think it has anything to do with the community of Estevan or the management. It's a cultural thing sometimes for them, some of the things they'd like to see culturally, they just aren't here in Estevan yet. I know some of that is starting to roll around, and hopefully, that will help with future recruitment, but absolutely, we have that agency, and hopefully, we bear some fruit from that. And you're right, it is right across Canada, it's not just Saskatchewan, and certainly not just Estevan.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wolieser. And another thing, Minister Carr, that we're working on is getting the President of SBC with your help down here, along with the minister, hopefully, to meet council, and we'd like to get a game plan where we're going. I know with the feds, they say that we're going to, you know, all be shut down in 2030. Hopefully, that's not the case, but again, that's what they're telling us. You know, between Coronac and Estevan, we're looking at over 1,000 megawatts. How do you make that up? I know incrementally, we're seeing green energy being built within the province, but nothing that would help to shoulder the burden of that kind of loss of power in our province. So again, hopefully, through your office and the offices of the Ministry of SBC and the President, we can maybe get together and discuss what that looks like, how the province can help us. Maybe we could even collectively get a meeting with the federal government. Heaven forbid, we have, they don't even answer our emails, so I don't know how...
They don't answer ours either.
I don't know how we can accomplish that, but again, I think we have to try, so I think that's another important endeavor that we have to work on.
No, for sure. So Don Morgan actually reached out to me about two or three weeks ago and said that he wanted to come to Estevan, he wanted to tour the carbon capture. And at that point in time, you had mentioned, what about the new CEO? And I think that'd be a great opportunity for Reuben Pandia to come down here and have a look at what Estevan actually has for power facilities, looking at Shand, and just hammering that. It's good till 2042, there's absolutely no need to leave stranded resources and see what that looks like. But just getting them down here so that they can see exactly when we're making decisions, exactly what that looks like. You talked about the green energy. We have opportunities, I know we're getting 100 megawatt solar facility here in Estevan, somewhere in Estevan, it hasn't been decided, land hasn't been picked, it's still in the very infancy of that. But we need to keep in mind, for every megawatt of green energy we put in, we have to have baseload for that, because on the days when that is not working, and I think we've all read the articles that have been written out of this community, his name is escaping me, who's our little roving reporter that talks energy? Brian Zincheck, of course, yes. He has some great articles that absolutely tell the facts of what green energy, what happens to it when it's too hot, what happens to it when it's too cold, when it's too windy, when it's not windy enough. So for every megawatt of green energy we have, we still have to have that baseload to supplement it with. We have the transmission here, we have the workers here, we have the knowledge, so it totally makes sense that all of that is here.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for that, Minister Carr. And on another bright spot, we have a very active cystic fibrosis organization in our community, and we understand the provincial government is helping out with that new drug. I forget what it's called, but you're willing to put money forward for that?
Yeah, every now and then, there are new drugs that come on the formulary. It goes, it's a really long process to decide which drugs come on and which drugs don't come on, and every now and then, we do have a good news story that we're able to say we're able to bring this drug on, and people are very relieved, so.
Yeah, that's much appreciated. So any other questions or comments from Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just wondering, can you just explain what percentage or how much of the tax collected from the sales of marijuana goes back to municipalities?
I can tell you that from the sale of marijuana, it is not a money-making endeavor just yet in the province of Saskatchewan.
Okay, is that just Saskatchewan that's not making money, or is it another?
I don't know what's happening in other provinces, but I do know that it's break-even pretty much for Saskatchewan.
Okay, yeah, there was just some talk, basically, that the municipalities were still struggling to try and get, basically, and again, federal when they first brought it in, that there was going to be extra money from municipalities when this came, and we still, we continuously see more and more marijuana stores open up, which is a great thing for the economy, I guess, but if nobody's making any extra income from it, then is it?
Well, I mean, as you're fully aware, that was a federal decision to legalize that, so the province of Saskatchewan obviously gave everybody the opportunity to be able to open those types of stores up, just like every other province across Canada. And it's just, it's not a moneymaker right now.
No.
I can't tell you why, I don't know why, but maybe I'm not shopping there.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
That could be it.
My other question is, is the fact that because at first, it was such a lottery to be able to open up these types of stores, and then all of a sudden, the province just kind of said, okay, we're just going to let everybody open them up. So I know, like, at the beginning, the city of Estevan allowed one store versus, you know, other, I think we were allowed two in the beginning, and now, I believe, we have approximately seven, six or seven? It's, yeah, we have one down at the Shell Pro Washers opening one, so, and again, I was just on holidays, and it seemed everywhere I turned, I could find a store that seemed to be selling this. So that's what made me think, like, it should be like a liquor store, where you make the revenue, you make the tax, and so that's why I was thinking that maybe that is the one good thing about it, is the fact that if we were actually receiving some sort of a tax kickback from that, so.
Okay, I'll take that back.
If we start making money, it would be nice for the municipalities to be able to see that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Seeing no more questions, thank you again, Minister Carr, for coming this evening. Much appreciated, and we look forward to continue to work with you to help our community grow.
You're welcome, and enjoy the rest of your council meeting tonight.
You're more than welcome to stay.
You know, I would, but I have an 8:00 AM in Regina tomorrow, so I'm going to drive up tonight instead of getting up at 4:30 or 5:00 o'clock, just saying.
No, we understand. Thanks again, Minister Carr.
Enjoy the night, guys.
Thank you. Okay, moving ahead, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Port, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to accept the council, the minutes of the council meeting held on June 27th? Counselor Vroba, seconded by Counselor Wolieser, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from Mr. Greg Choma a request for reimbursement. City water pressure has been inadequate at our location for a number of years. Last year, this was discussed with myself and the water treatment plant manager. This year, the pressure was as bad or worse than previous years. We have therefore invested in a pressure system to ensure that our household appliances and lawn sprinklers work as they were intended to, and that costly malfunctions could be avoided. We are asking that we be reimbursed for the pressure system and installation. We have attached a copy of those paid invoices. Please contact me if you have any questions. So we've got the one bill of $5.58, pressure pump, and then the parts of $5.58 come to a total of $780. We have Shane with us this evening. Shane, if you don't mind coming up to the mic, I think city manager, maybe if we could get a motion this evening to postpone this, maybe to our next meeting, and that will give us the opportunity for Shane to get more information.
Thank you, Your Worship. I believe Mr. Wixis is doing a pressure logger on it, but it will take some time to get suitable readings to come to council to consider this item and possible solution to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Shane, did you have anything to add? Will maybe postpone this to the next meeting? Would that be all right?
Yep, I'm planning on pulling the pressure logger. I wanted to leave it on there for a week to see if there's any anomalies. I did put a pressure logger on there two years ago, and the lowest the pressure got was 39.3. So he did contact me last year, it was no change. He never contacted me at all this year, so that's why I never had the logger out.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Shane. We'll put the logger on, and then we'll have a better idea for the next meeting. Thank you for that. Counselor Vroba?
Oh, Counselor Port, there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Your Worship. Can either of you just maybe walk me through the timeline of how this came to be, that you guys had a meeting, and then he felt like he wasn't heard, and/or however it came to him buying this pressure system? Can I have the timeline of that or something, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it's probably been ongoing, Shane, I think you would admit, probably a couple years. In that quadrant of the city, we have got low pressure. It still meets the minimum requirements, but they have been low. And finally, this year, I guess, in, you know, frustration, he was frustrated, he went out and got it. But a lot of the tests we did, we did meet minimum pressure, did we not, Shane?
Yeah, there's a little bit of background. Four years ago, when I first started, he did phone to say that he had a low pressure drop. I did put a pressure logger on, and at that time, the pressure was dropping down to about 26 PSI at night, which is fairly low. After that, with engineering and the department, we went down, we figured out, like, by turning some valves and increasing the pump pressure by 10 PSI, that we would solve the issue. After that was completed, I put the pressure logger back on, and that's where it's come up to 40 now. So since my time here, we've increased the pressure roughly 15 to 20 PSI in that area. Any more, I'm taking a look at to see what infrastructure would need to be put in place to increase it more, but at the current time rate now, it's, as far as I know, until I get that logger back, it's still sitting around 40, which is pretty common for municipalities.
Okay, any other further questions? Counselor Port? Okay, no problem. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. So that was my question, was what is it common in the other areas? Is the 39, 40 the same? So, and, yeah, the other part of my question is, if you put the logger on, now that he has this device on there, is that going to show a higher pressure because he has the device, or do you have the ability to do it before it hits the device?
So the pressure logger that I have, it hooks onto a fire hydrant. So I just disconnect a... So I just disconnect a head of a fire hydrant, I push the pressure logger on, and then it monitors it all. It turns itself on, it grabs a reading every five minutes. So once that's on, it'll come back to me, then I load it into computer, and then kind of graph it out. So it, for a household, it really doesn't matter. The city doesn't really monitor what happens inside people's homes, what they have hookup, what their sprinkler systems are, how much water they do use. But obviously, if you have a small line coming in, and you have three people taking a shower, your line coming in won't be able to handle that. And that's where pressure boosters come into play.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing, just to make sure I understand this right, if the pressure PSI is 39, and it goes into a regular home, then it would depend on how, because I know I've been at some homes where all of a sudden you turn on the sink in the kitchen, and the guy on the shower screams, whereas other homes don't seem to even notice that that's happening? So is that what you're saying, is that 39 PSI is what's going into all the homes? And if whatever's happening in their home could be causing the different pressure drops?
Correct. Now, different parts of the city have different pressure. Obviously, if you're down the hill, you have a lot of pressure because you have the height of the hill. If you're in the north side, that runs a little bit higher of a pressure of zones, and then the closer you are to the reservoirs, you also have higher pressure. And then as you spread out from it, dissipates out.
Okay, yeah. Because I would like to make a motion that we table this for right now, because just I have a few concerns in the fact that if we have a citizen that goes out and buys something for their own home to increase the pressure before we even have the report, we could be setting a precedent to have to buy these for every home in the city that decides they need to bring more pressure. So at this time, I think I'd like to see the report tabled, request tabled, and then we can bring it back to a future meeting.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Vroba. You'll make that motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And yeah, there's lots of variables when you talk water pressure. Some have a half-inch line going in the house, some have a three-quarter inch, some may have a couple banks of 10, 12, 14 sprinklers, some may have two or three. So it's definitely, it definitely varies on many, many different things. So thank you for that. Have we got a second or, thank you, Councilor Sernik?
Also a question.
Oh, okay, go ahead, please.
Do we, do we have a minimum, like, through bylaw or contract or anything that states that we supply houses with this certain amount of PSI?
We kind of have a benchmark of roughly 40 pounds, but as Shane said, over the different quadrants in the city, they all vary a little bit, depending, you know, if you're in a low area, of course, you're gonna have more pressure. Some of the newer areas have more pressure. I think it would be fair to say we vary, Shane, from 40 PSI to 60, depending what area of town. Is that fair? Or maybe even more?
Up to 90.
Up to 90.
If you're down the hill, you roughly have 90.
Okay.
But like, is there anything in writing a code, or, you know what I mean, that states we have to have 40?
So in order for boil water advisories or drinking water advisories, we have to maintain 20 PSI. Now, obviously, if there's doing work, or there's a water break or something like that, households could drop. So our bylaws never guarantee pressure at all times.
Are you? Okay, thank you, Councilor Sernik. And you had made a second to that motion, correct? Thank you. Any further questions or comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from GFL, the cart report for June of '22. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you. Councilor Clark, seconded by, Councilor Sernik. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Estevan Public Library, the minutes of June 21st. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you, Councilor Wallyser. Thank you, Councilor Sernik, for seconding. Any questions or comments? Anything, Councilor Wallyser, you'd like to add?
Nothing tonight, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, from, under written reports of committees, we have from the Estevan Bruins, the minutes of June 23rd. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you, Councilor Ford, seconded by, Councilor Clark. Councilor Ford, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing major tonight, Your Worship. Just, it's really too hot to be thinking about hockey right now, but season tickets are on sale. If anybody's looking to purchase, they can either go online or go to the office.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, ready for the question? All, oh, Councilor Sernik, go ahead.
I have one question for the city manager. Like, through the minutes here, talking about the tap house party zone back there, this year, is it gonna be any changes to that tap house zone?
Thank you, Your Worship, Councilor Sernik. Are you regarding to, like, the seating area and stuff there?
Yeah, it was kind of first come, first served before. Is it gonna be an individual spot, so?
Sorry, that is one through the Bruins generally, Councilor Sernik?
Councilor Ford?
I can speak to that a little bit. I believe when we spoke, that that area is kind of gonna stay like it is. That area, we're gonna leave it up to Pete and the tap house to say, you know what, you decide how this is going. But as far as I know, it's gonna be first come, first served. So your seat is still safe if you show up early.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford. Okay. Did I get a motion on that? I did?
You did, I just missed a second.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you, city clerk. Next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Creighton Lodge, the minutes of May 27th. Do we have a motion for that? Thank you, Councilor Wallyser, seconded by, Councilor Vroba. Any comments, Councilor Vroba, you'd like to add, or?
Just that Creighton Lodge is doing great, and we appreciate Councilor Wallyser's efforts on our board and the city for supporting us on that board. And also, currently, we have a waiting list of approximately 159, so we get phone calls all the time, looking for people to come and live at Creighton Lodge. The latest is, I have a lot of ladies that are in their 70s putting their name on because of our list is so long, so they want to make sure that they're there. I plan to retire in nine to 14 years, but after that, I might put my name on, too.
Okay, well, thank you both for the job that you do there. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have the Public Works Pine Avenue lighting tender. Now, tenders were opened for the pine intersection traffic signals on Tuesday, June 28th. In council chambers, two tender packages were received, one from Cam Traffic and Albright Electric out of Saskatoon. Now, Albright was a little bit less, but they are unable to get us some of the needed pieces of equipment. So it could take up to 20 weeks for some of the equipment. So they wanted 380,000, or, yeah, 350, I'm sorry, and Cam Traffic wanted 380. But I guess the issue is, city manager, do we wait 20 weeks for the needed parts? What's your thoughts on that? I know the recommendation is to go ahead, pay a little bit more, and get it done.
Thank you, Your Worship. So speak this a little bit. This was a project that was approved in budget, and we subsequently got federal funding to do this under the coal transition initiative. This is in coordination with the development at the mall. This is turning the main entrance of the mall to be at Pine Avenue, where there will be a lighted intersection. The funding agreement does have timeline commitments, so to meet those, we would have to go with Cam Traffic to meet those in certain times. Also, we do have a great working relationship with Cam Traffic with similar equipment that can be certified in spring and fall that we do every year. So that is based on the recommendation, and to meet the federal guidelines, we are choosing the faster turnaround time.
Okay, thank you for that, city manager. So that is the recommendation, to go ahead and pay a little bit more. Councilor Ford, you had your hand up, then Councilor Frank.
Thanks, Your Worship. 20 weeks takes us right into basically Christmas, so by the time they get this started, it'll be springtime. I would like to go with the recommendation of going with the one that was recommended, Cam Traffic, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for that. You'll make that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, and I would second it. This is just a sign of the times these days. Getting parts is just not quick like it used to be. I've lost tenders, I think every business has, it's just the reality of it. And obviously, we want to get the federal money, because that's gonna benefit taxpayers here more than, more than the little extra we'll pay, so definitely worthwhile. So, yeah, I would second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Sernik.
Thank you, Your Worship. I kind of just had a question more about the project itself. So the entrance to the mall will be directly off Pine Avenue now? The intersections that are there now will be closed?
Thank you, Councilor Sernik. Yes, that was the plan, and I can get the full design from the Mark, Estevan Market Mall individuals. I believe, yeah, the main entrance will be into Mark's warehouse from, sorry, Marks from the Pine Avenue, but the other ones will be closed into, by Tim Hortons there. But I can get a full design to council, so they're fully aware of what is being completed on the mall grounds. For sure.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, Councilor Sernik, for the question. And I think the whole idea, and it goes to, you know, the architects and people that know more about this, by having it there, it will supposedly drive more traffic into the mall and help them out. And they're doing a lot of improvements in the mall, as you've probably already noticed. The owner has invested a lot of money in the back and some in the front, so when he's all done, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, just that little explanation, you know, makes approval and everything way better. I just kind of first thought, why does Pine Avenue need lights, right? Well, if that's the, you know what I mean, it's all good.
Exactly. Okay, thank you for that. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have the building inspector permit report for June of '22. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you, Councilor Wallyser, seconded by, Councilor Vroba. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, we have from the water treatment plant manager, the water quality report for June. Could we have a motion for that, please? Thank you, Councilor Clark, seconded by, Councilor Ford. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have the fire services report for April and May. Could we have a motion for that, please? Thank you, Councilor Sernik. Have we got a second or, thank you, Councilor Ford. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. City manager, did you have any news as far as the fire department goes? The Rick will be acting for now, acting?
Yes, Your Worship. There'll be discussion with council in close, but for the time being, Deputy Chief Rick Davies will be the acting chief through the summer month, and we will have the discussion moving forward, but he is acting chief at this point.
Okay, thank you for that. Much appreciated. Next, under executive reports, we have from land development, the zoning bylaw amendment, the public notice. So we're looking at the proposed rezoning of industrial lands on the city-owned portion of southwest of the 25th, 2nd, 8th of 2nd, not including the land to the west of the drainage swale, which fronts Kensington Avenue, as shown on bylaw schedule A. The purpose of the application is to rezone the land from urban holding district to industrial M2. The purpose is to accommodate a possible greenhouse and biomass plant. The proposal was circulated and advertised following first reading. Land Development Services did not receive much in the way of feedback on the proposal. The only inquiry was from the adjoining landowner to the east in the RM of Estevan, who has stated that her organization supports the proposal. Considerations to realize the proposed biomass plant, as it is currently envisioned, a subdivision will have to be prepared, and a roadway will have to be developed. As a detailed proposal submission has not been submitted for either project, passage of this bylaw will not make the approval of a future biomass or greenhouse development automatic. The city would still retain the ability to evaluate each proposal on its own merits and conformance to our planning policies and bylaws. Council also has the option of giving second reading to the proposal and withholding third until a subdivision proposal has been submitted. However, as a proposed bylaw is in full conformance with the future land use, the plan described in the official community plan, third reading could also be considered. The long-term land use contemplated for the land under the official community plan is industrial, so the bylaw conforms to the city's long-term land use plan. So this evening, under introduction of bylaws, we have none. Public hearings and reports, we have none. Giving notice, we have none. Motions from committee, we have none this evening. Moving into consideration of bylaws, we're asking for bylaw 2022-2055 to amend 2010-1834, zoning from urban holding, second and third reading this evening. So could we entertain second reading of bylaw 2022-2059? Thank you, Councilor Vroba. Thank you, Councilor Clark. Any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now, could we have third, an adoption for use for bylaw 2022-2055, a bylaw in the city of Estevan to amend zoning bylaw 2010-1834, being a bylaw in the city of Estevan to regulate the use of land and location of buildings and other structures in the city of Estevan? Third reading, please. Thank you, Councilor Sernik. Thank you, Councilor Ford. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, inquiries. Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. Two things. First, it's great to see the city announced that Churchill Park is in its final stages. The water is getting put in, they were putting their toes in. Aaron has a great little video out there, so the pool looks great, and I'm gonna have to take my grandkids, because I know my 23-year-old son won't go with me anymore, so I'm stuck with the grandkids, which will be a fun thing to do. The other thing is the pathway system. I know a lot of people are looking forward to having garbage cans, and maybe even the odd porta potty. So in talking to Rod Marsh, they're gonna put out some temporary garbage cans around the pathway, so they may, they're not gonna be the permanent ones, because those won't come till near the end of September. And again, we talked about supply and demand chain right now, and so those garbage cans are in order, but unfortunately, they won't be here till the end of September. The other thing is with porta potties, I, again, as a council, I don't even know if we've really discussed or if Rod has really concrete plan on where to put the porta potties. So I feel like what we need from the public is if Rod does put one or two out, to basically let us know if they're in the right spots, or if they need to be different. And also, if there's any type of vandalism, or people doing things that, you know, because I, again, if they're out there and they're on a pathway system, you want to make sure there's somewhere where there isn't gonna be vandalism, because if there is, then we obviously can't have them in those spots. So I know there's one at the track over by the comp, and it's very nice for the people that are walking out there to have that. So I do think that if we have a couple strategically placed where steam can get to them and empty them and keep them clean, then they're gonna be an asset to our pathway system. But I also know that with the garbage cans, there are some people that are carrying their doggy bags and picking it up with the bags, but then throwing them on the pathway. So if we can stop doing that and putting them in the garbage cans, that would be greatly appreciated by everybody.
Thank you, Councilor Vroba. Yeah, we will have them at the appropriate stations, hopefully, and over time, I guess we'll learn where the best locations are. Thank you for that. And that pillow bouncer had a short few days, and unfortunately, we're not sure what happened. Maybe a defect, because it was brand new, but we will be getting that rectified. We'll have a new one in place here ASAP.
Yeah, and I did have a couple people inquire about that as well, and a lot of people are concerned that moving forward, the same thing's gonna happen, they're gonna have too many people on. Someone I inquired in the fact that 250-pound limit, you know, you have a couple kids, but that 250-pound limit is actually per person. So if you're over 250, please refrain from going on that bouncer. But they have them in other communities, and they've been very well, and they've been there for years. So this was just one of those things, Murphy's Law. You know, you put in something fabulous, and it just didn't turn out that way, but it will be. It's going to be fabulous, and we are going to be able to bounce on it, so.
Absolutely, and we thank Top Tork for that.
Yes.
And we will be getting that rectified, uh, as soon as possible. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, yeah, just wanted to say, uh, we just had a successful downtown business association with the street dance, and it continues to, uh, blow me away for the amount of volunteers that we get, and we've been, probably since Centennial Cup, we've had events on every weekend all through that time, and it's gonna carry on right through the, the summer, and I think it's, uh, very appreciative of the people that helped put those on, and I, I'm just so glad to see the community, uh, supporting them as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor Clark, for that, and congratulations, uh, for your many, many years of helping out the ball. I know you finally got recognized, so congratulations on that.
It was, it was, it was an honor to be put up with some of the, those great people that have worked on those diamonds, so, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Good, thank you. Councilor Wallyser?
Nothing tonight, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. Nothing major tonight, just a huge kudos to the Source Valley Theater for their successful season. I know they're running until, I believe, the 30th, but Councilor Clark and City Clerk and I attended last week, and it was an amazing show. I think we were the group that was laughing the hardest at the show, but it was, it was awesome, so if there's anybody who has a couple spare hours this week, make sure you go to it, 'cause it's really good.
Great, well, perhaps it tickles the funny bones of politicians more than others, but that's great, you guys had a good time. Councilor Sernick?
Thank you, worship. Uh, just looking for an update on to the, the pathing system adding out to KFC there.
Okay.
Thank you, worship, Councilor Sernick. So I, I did talk to Rod Marsh today about that. There is still some wet areas in the base there before they go, but it is on JNCOS' list to do as they, um, as they have time here in the next coming weeks. I know that they did walk all the existing pathways to find any areas that maybe needed some work, and they wanted to complete those areas prior to paving that last section, so I would assume kind of end of August or September, as JNCOS finds time to do that, but I can give an update as we learn more from JNCOS on fixing some of those other areas.
Perfect, thank you. Um, then just to throw it in there, is there any update on the, the CN, is it CN rail on Kensington Avenue?
Uh, Councilor Sernick, I believe they are still doing their safety audit of that intersection, so nothing can be done until, uh, the railroad clears what can be done at that area.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, the railways sometimes, believe it or not, can be a little difficult, but, uh, we will continue to.
It was sure a nice one to close Kensington Avenue that one day. Everybody, everybody really appreciates.
Yeah, and that wasn't the city. Thank you for clarifying that.
I know.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sernick. Councilor Frank?
Thanks, your worship, but just have a couple, um, I, I just had a complaint, I know it's been brought up before, and I know every year, police always try to do their best that they can, but, uh, um, just, uh, we continue to have a lot of semi-traffic in downtown Estevan that's unnecessary, that could be using the bypass, so just, uh, pass along to our police to kind of keep an eye on that. Obviously, there's some trucks that do need to come through town, but, uh, try to get as much of it out on the bypasses as we can.
Good point.
When they're not coming, when they don't have a need to be in down, so that was one.